Michelle, can you hear me okay?
Let's do a quick roll call before I call the meeting to order if you don't mind.
Okay. Councillor Fury. I see him. Councillor Fury is here. Councillor Davis?
Present.
Councillor Sweeney?
Here.
Councillor Norton?
Present.
Councillor Hannon?
Here.
And Councillor Cornell?
I'm here.
Mayor Muffin.
Thanks, Michelle. Good to see everyone tonight. I wish I was in the tropical islands, but I'm not. It's just a backdrop I put behind my screen this evening, but it's nice to think about going to a tropical place right now. I will go ahead and call this October 19th, 2020, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order our Director of Administrative Services, just called a roll call of the council, and I believe we have everyone present this evening. So, welcome to the public that are joining us this evening remotely, and thank you for your patience as we work through our remote meetings. On that note, I would like to ask Councillor Norton to please lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Happy to. Does anybody have a flag? No. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much, Rebecca, and welcome again, everyone. We'll move to item three of the agenda, which is our communications from the public. I'm going to invite Chris Hunt to facilitate public comment this evening, but I'll first start with Michelle. Michelle, did we have any written communications from the public that you would like to share with the council and the public this evening?
We do, and actually, I'm going to try to moderate the meeting tonight, so bear with me.
Of course.
But we do. Toby Scott wrote a letter. "It's nice to see the work in progress in the Biaduct Underpass moving forward. However, it would be nice if the work crew could address the detour roadway on a daily basis. This is the worst road in Whitefish with potholes. I drive a truck and it is very rocky and rolling in that. I'm surprised there hasn't been Volkswagen lost in one of the potholes. Scraping it down every morning or again in the afternoon would make it better and not an obstacle course. Thank you for considering my request and passing it along to Public Works and those in charge of the construction." Toby Scott. And then we do have one Mary Flowers does want to speak. And Mary, you're on mute.
Thank you. Mary Flowers, Citizens for a Better Flathead, 135 Main Street in Kalispell. And I want to touch briefly on a number of issues you do have in your packet, some comments that I provided earlier to the Housing Committee, and I want to touch on those just briefly as well. I first want to just mention that I just got off the Zoom call with 60 people with no background noise and just really ease in hearing and having just come prior to that off of the council work session where there was a lot of static and difficult to hear and voices breaking up. I do want to encourage the council to look at Zoom as an option, but maybe less problematic. And I also want to comment briefly on public participation using this online technology, and I very much appreciate and support that as an option during this current situation. But given the difficulty of the public hearing and participating and just the unique format of these meetings, both committee and council, I think it would be good to look at adding additional opportunities for public comment so that there's more opportunity for question and answers, particularly on the committee level by the public. This transportation corridor plan, Highway 93 Quarter Plan, is a multi-page document that it's needs to have more opportunity for the public to weigh in and to just have some open-ended question and answer sessions as that moves through the committee level. Again, on the highway corridor plan, I am concerned that there seems to be a real rush on this plan, and I'm not sure what the rush is and would encourage the council to consider the timeline that the staff apparently is operating under. Given the complexity of this document, I think it's really important that at the committee level it get vetted well, and you know, the committee's doing a great job asking questions, but just not enough time in this format. And let's see. So I hope that we can also see some better coordination between getting information out of the transportation plan, and I did participate this week in some of those public sessions. And one of the things that was of concern is that apparently there has already been an allocation of where future growth in the city in the next 20 years will be occurring. And that's a major factor in how this transportation model gets structured, and so I would ask that that information on how that growth was allocated be made public so that the community can understand what the assumptions are in the transportation model. And then finally, I want to say that in your packet, I provided a copy of the Kalispell Housing Report, and the city does an annual housing report as well. But when I saw this and compared it to the information that we get in the city report, I was quite impressed with what Kalispell has done, particularly on the level of mapping that they had done, and I would really like to see the council look at this as a opportunity to provide more information to the public in the annual housing report. I think the public and I think the committees, Transportation Committee, Housing Committee would all benefit from a more detailed report. So thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight, and appreciate that.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks, Michelle. I'll touch briefly on, normally I don't do this, but in follow-up to Toby's comments regarding the Baker underpass and the condition of the road, it would be, I think advantageous to require the contractor to fill in some of those potholes. It's definitely a bit rough, you know, crossing the underpass, and I understand construction logistics, but if there's any possibility to improve that condition throughout the duration of construction, I think that would be helpful. If you don't mind, Craig following through with that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I will tell you that the contractor has multiple times per day been working on potholes, filling them and grading them, and we only have about two more days of dealing with that bypass. I hope that they'll be paving the first portion of the road over the structure tomorrow. We'll be driving on it Wednesday.
Great. Good news. Thanks, Greg. Appreciate that. Not seeing any further communications from the public. I'll stay with Michelle. Michelle, any volunteer board reports from those that have called in tonight?
No, not seeing any.
Okay. How about the council? Any volunteer board reports?
Chris, I'd like to, this is Rebecca. I'd just like to remind people that we have a number of board openings. There was a list in the paper, and you really don't have to know that much to volunteer, but it would be really nice if people would consider volunteering their time to fill out those boards and be involved.
Thanks, Rebecca. Not seeing any additional volunteer board reports from the council. Move on to our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the minutes from our October 5th regular meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second to the motion?
All second.
Seconded by Councillor Hannon. Further discussion? Michelle, roll call, please.
Councillor Fury? I'll come back.
I'm in favor.
Okay, thanks.
I am also in favor.
Councillor Sweeney?
In favor.
Councillor Norton?
In favor.
Councillor Hannon?
Aye.
And Councillor Sweeney, or Councillor Cornell, sorry.
In favor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thank you, council, and that brings us quickly on to one public hearing this evening, which will be ordinance number 20-15, an ordinance amending the architectural review standards, and this will be on a first reading.
Right. So this is a follow-up to a work session and a couple of work sessions we've had with council, and the Architectural Review Committee has been working on this project for a couple of years now. Back in 2018, we, the committee received a direction to address certain different items. We came back in, oh, maybe about a month and a half ago, listing how we've, the committee has addressed all those different issues. The committee has been, and design standards have been in place since 2003.
I can't hear Wendy. Wendy, you were cutting out.
Yes, just to, some of the highlights, I guess, for the committee. We did have a work session again with you folks in early September. You folks were pretty supportive of all the changes, and you had a couple of items that you wanted the committee to further look at, which will be on a future work session or work agenda for the committee. We did have a public hearing with the planning board. So we noticed adjacent landowner or advisory agencies and placed a legal on the pilot. We also sent an email out to about 35 recent architectural review applicants, so that would be architects, designers, and builders. We sent that out in September. We didn't receive any comments. We also sent it out again in October, and we still have not, we didn't receive any comments from those folks. So the attached standards, the whole document's been fully edited, lightly reorganized. Photos, maps, and drawings were added. References to the planning jurisdiction were removed. This document recommends extending the Old Town South District kind of as part of the highway corridor plan, south from 6th to the river, instead of ending at 6th Street. And this was suggested as part of the Highway 93 Corridor Plan. The plan aligns with the various zoning text amendments that have occurred over the years. We've clarified the permitting process, added references to sustainable materials and techniques and firewise references. There's further references to enhance pedestrian and bicycle experience and added standards to the townhouse duplex and triplex section. We've provided some drawings and narratives to help folks out with smaller projects, including site plans and different types of drawings. So the attachment, you have the Word version has the underline and strikeouts, but then you also have the Nice version with the pictures and the maps, and that's the one that you'll be adopting if you choose to do so. So the planning board held a public hearing on September 17th. There's a couple of members of the Architectural Review Committee there, but there was nobody from the public that commented, and the planning board did unanimously recommend approval of that text amendment. And I would note, too, we have at least three Architectural Review Committee members that are in the attendees section. We have our Chair, Kathy Scamp, and our Vice Chair, Shane Jacobs, then also Leslie Lowe, who's a landscape architect, so if you have technical questions, happy to answer them for you. And then I can answer any questions, too, that you might have about different sections.
Thanks very much.
We can put it on the screen, too, if you want to look at stuff.
Thanks very much, Wendy. I'll go to the individual councillors. If you have any questions for Wendy, we'll start with Andy.
No questions.
Thanks, Andy. Frank?
Nothing for me, not right now. Thank you.
Ryan?
I don't have any questions for Wendy.
Thank you, Ryan. Rebecca?
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Ben?
Questions? Thank you.
And finally, Steve?
Nothing. Thanks.
Thanks very much, council. Thanks, Wendy, for the staff report. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance number 20-15, an ordinance amending the architectural standards. This will be on a first reading. And Michelle, I'll turn it back to you for public comment this evening.
So if anybody would like to speak towards this agenda item, please raise your hand, and I will go down the line and then meet you. Mary, do you have, are you wanting to speak towards this agenda item? Mary Flowers?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you. It looks like there's no public comment.
Were there any written comments, Michelle, for the record?
No, there wasn't.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance 20-15 and turn it back to the council for a moment, and I will say that I felt the update to the standards and guidelines were very well presented. I appreciated the illustrations and the update to the exhibits. They were included in the document, and I hope it will help guide developers when they come to the city with applications, as well as assist the Architectural Review Committee in their review of applications. With that said, I would entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance number 20-15, an ordinance amending the architectural review standards, and this would be on a first reading.
Thank you, Ryan. They're second to the motion.
All second.
Seconded by Councillor Sweeney. Ryan, would you like to speak to you, Michelle?
No, thank you.
Any comments from the council?
I would just say I read this very carefully, and I just wanted to say thank you for all the thought that went into it. I think there's a lot of really important updates to this. It's a great thing for the town, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Further comments from the council?
To say thank you to the community, too, because I think the architectural review process has made our town very beautiful, and I really appreciate them.
Thanks, Rebecca. Michelle, roll call, please.
Councillor Fury?
In favor.
Councillor Davis?
In favor.
Councillor Sweeney?
In favor.
Councillor Norton?
In favor.
Councillor Hannon?
Aye.
Councillor Cornell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks again, Wendy, and in particular, thanks to the Architectural Review Committee for their hard work in pulling this document together. I know it took several years, and we certainly appreciate their efforts. With that said, we'll move on to item seven of our agenda, which is communications from our city manager, Dana Smith. Move to item 7A. You have Dana's written report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Dana from the council, and I'll start with Andy?
Well, none. Sorry. Thanks, Andy. Aye.
Dana, I think we'll probably have a conversation about this later as through council comments, but I do want us to continue to pay attention to what is going on with the explosion of COVID cases in our city and the effects it has on our businesses. The other I'd like to know is, and this, again, it's kind of a to-do list, but I think Mary's point, I think, one of the things we're finding with WebEx is that it is kind of clunky, and I don't know whether it's a function of how we're using it or we're not using it. The, and so I, we need to investigate that if we're going to continue to use this, but the other is, is that I would like to be able to, and maybe there's a way we can do this this way, and that they're just not applying for it. I would like, for example, when we're interviewing people on WebEx, it would really be nice to have them appear as opposed to just, you know, amorphous voice, and so I think that would be helpful to us, and if there was any way that this format can be used so that when people are speaking, even public comment, in my view, it'd be nice if they had an opportunity to be seen as they would be if they were on, at the dais at council. So there's just a couple of thoughts on that particular problem. So, thanks.
Thanks, Frank, and I can wait for my updates about the, I've had a few discussions and done quite a bit of work when it comes to COVID, but since it sounds like it'll be a council discussion after, I can wait till then.
Okay. Thanks, Dana. Thanks, Frank. Ryan, any questions for Dana?
No, Dana, not right now.
Rebecca?
This could be Dana or Michelle. I just would like to update the public about the voting process and how that's going at City Hall. Quite a few people have reached out to me to ask if we had a ballot box, what the hours were, that kind of thing, and if you could just review it for the public, and thank you again for doing it this year.
Sure. Yep. So while City Hall is closed, we will reopen Thursday, but while we are closed, we do have election judges that are here, so you can still drop off your ballots 8 to 5 p.m. Monday through Friday, and then on Election Day of November 3rd, we will have judges here from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. And during the off hours or when the city halls are closed, you can actually drop your ballots in our utility billing box, and we will account for those the next day, and they will be placed in the ballot box, which is picked up and taken by the judges to the election department on the day of the election. So we are, regardless of City Hall being open to the public, we are still accepting ballots right now.
And Dana, clarifying one thing, is it not true that the ballots that are dropped off on a daily basis are, in fact, returned to the to the elections department on a daily basis or a weekly basis?
I think it's a daily basis. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, so the election department comes and picks up the box daily. So depending on how many ballots are in the box, they might come twice a day or just come once a day. So we do have that option.
Great. Thank you. That's excellent news.
And one other thing, you can also, on your My Voter page, you can track your ballot. So on there, it will note when you've received it in the mail, when you dropped it off, and when it was counted, and if it was approved.
Great. Good information, Michelle. Thanks very much. Ben, any questions for Dana on her staff report?
No questions. Thank you.
And Steve?
Nothing. Thanks, Dana.
Dana, I'll turn it back to you. Any other items you'd like to bring to the attention of the council?
I will bring up one right now. That is, Parks and Rec has always done a trick-or-treat trail at Bucky Park for young kids. Obviously, with COVID, that's changed things, so we are not doing that this year, but they are hosting a virtual costume contest on Facebook, a live event, and that will be for ages zero to 12, is what it appears, and so we'll be doing prizes, trying to still celebrate the the holiday with kids, but doing it safely. So that's just the one update. I do have updates about COVID, but it sounds like we'll be talking about that in depth here in a second.
Thanks, Dana. That's a thanks to Maria. That's a very creative way to keep the spirit of Halloween alive for our young kids and our community. So thanks, Maria, for orchestrating that. Thank you, Dana, and we'll move on to item eight of our agenda, which is communications from myself and the city council. Just since I was not at the special session, were appointments made to the volunteer boards and committees? Yes, okay. With that said, we'll move to councillor comments, and we'll start with Andy.
I have them, but I'm not going to I seem to be having a little bit of problem here on the, on the technology end, so I'll just
Okay, yeah, you're breaking up a bit, Andy, so I'll move it on to Frank. Any comments this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dana, I would like to have, and I would like to have a discussion from you or with you about the cases and the numbers of cases, the businesses that are affected in the city as we know it today. Do we need better information? Would that be helpful? Can we get it? Or are there things you want us to consider, or we should be considering in terms of doing what we can and what's practical to further protect our businesses and to protect our citizens from this seems to be uncontrolled growth in the number of cases that we're
So for you, I've actually been working on this a bit today and over the weekend. First, I'll start by saying that I've reached out to city, the city of Kalispell, city of Columbia Falls, to get their city of Kalispell haven't really heard back specifically about their thoughts. Susan is going to be talking to their city council this evening about any concerns that their council has about the lack of action taken by the Board of Health, and if they would consider signing a letter of some type urging the board and the health officer and the commissioners really to take action. I spent some time talking to Carrie. She is the deputy I spent some time talking to Carrie. She is the Deputy Health Officer, and it's interesting what is going on right now. Technically, the Health Officer does have the authority to enact closures by herself, so... But the interim Health Officer is choosing to ask for the Board's approval. I asked about the data that they've, you know, said they can't provide. Originally, they said it was due to HIPAA because there were so few cases, so they were worried that by giving out location, it was easier to identify individuals. But now, we're at a point where they have so many cases that HIPAA really wouldn't be a problem, but that they do not have the capacity to clean up the data to actually provide it to us. So it would take too much time for them to go through each case and pull out the identifying information and clean up because of the way their reports cases. But I can tell you Carrie indicated that Whitefish, just her general look, Whitefish is a hotspot. And so two weeks ago, it was Kalispel Schools, Valley Schools. Now, today, this week, it's Whitefish Schools. They are definitely reporting a significant number of cases. She didn't say why she felt that Whitefish was a hotspot, other than, you know, tied it to maybe the bars and restaurants. And obviously, we know that those are issues. As soon as people start drinking, the masks come off, the social distancing goes away. And so that was their reasoning for the original proposal that the Health Board did not act on. In fact, that was pulled off of the agenda.
Dana, sorry, can I interrupt you? Can we just make sure everyone is on mute? Maybe if you have cases, make sure they're both on mute. There's a lot of feedback coming through, and I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. Angie, do you want to? Oh, yeah. There we go. Okay. We're good? Everybody's muted? Okay. So right now, where it stands is with bars and restaurants, I kind of asked for a little more information on why they took the approach to draft that type of requirement, and they really pulled from the CDC. They're saying that the common cases are occurring between ages 20 to 30 years old, and that that is really led by bars, gatherings, like after-parties from weddings or weddings themselves. So, you know, at this point, though, it sounds like it's a very political game that's being, or game, yeah, that's not the right word, a political issue that is coming to light with action being taken by the Board or not. The fact that Hillary Pryor, the previous Health Officer, I do not believe she went to the Health Board ever for approval, that those came directly from her. State law does allow that to occur. You know, I think that that shows that there's political pressures. Now, there's pressures, I think, that they want them to paint a pretty picture. And unfortunately, that's not what's happening. I can tell you that Carrie is definitely concerned with the case load that we're seeing. Aside from that, I did ask her if she'd come give an update, knowing that she's very busy and working many hours away from her family. But because we're remote, it's a lot easier. So at our next City Council meeting, I've asked her that either her or Tamalee could come and at least give an update for the council. I also, in the meantime, have been working with Whitefish Superintendent of Schools, Dave Means, and we have set up, or he has set up and coordinated a task force, a Whitefish Task Force, I guess, for COVID with North Valley Hospital, a couple doctors, Whitefish Schools, and myself, so that we can start discussing it on more of a local level. I had a few, a couple of conversations with him. The schools are having, you know, they're having challenges because the cases are coming through the schools now. You know, you'd think maybe people would be okay with them being partial remote, but it sounds like they're getting feedback that people are upset that they're actually partially remote and want them to be in full, you know, all full and in school. So at this point, you know, in talking to Angie, there's concerns about us taking action like we did back in March. If we were to do any type of ordinance for closing bars and restaurants, it does open us up to potential litigation. And I'll let Angie talk about that, more from the enforcement's standpoint, because how can I enforce an ordinance, you know, closure of businesses? That process takes time. And I think that there are some issues there. I do think that a letter written to the Health Board, Carrie did say at least, you know, that that would be something, writing a letter to the Health Board, encouraging them to take action, I think would be good. And again, I'll wait to hear from all of our different partners that I've reached out to to see if they'd be willing to sign on to that. Again, I'm not sure that that will do anything based on the makeup of that Health Board. So that's kind of my update. Angie, I don't know if you want to touch on the potential for ordinances. Oh, I should say, mask ordinance, they are actually, I talked to Carrie, they're still actually following up with businesses that aren't doing the masking, but what's happened is it's stalling out at the county attorney's level. So the Health Department does everything, and the county attorney is not going to do anything at this point. And he's told that to the Health Department. So that's unfortunate as well. Can you guys hear me? My internet is so weird at this point. Anything? I can hear you. Okay. Sorry. I completely agree with Dana. I mean, I, from a local level, it's really hard to do something when, A, the governor won't do anything and has basically said, hey, it's up to counties to do something. And the county is basically like, I'm not going to do anything either. So I have significant concerns from, you know, about enforcing anything that we might do right now. That doesn't mean that we can't do it. I do believe that we have the police power to impose reasonable restrictions. But again, I just, from an enforcement standpoint, how do we do it? You know, our police can't do it at this point. They have their hands full with a lot more than this at this point. So I'm happy to do anything the council wants, explore any restrictions you want to do, but enforcement-wise, this is going to be tough.
Angie, John, I'm just, if I can have the conversation, or at least my part of the conversation.
Please do.
What I, what I think is very, very important, given the mechanisms that we have at our disposal, which are very few, and they're, for lack of a better description, not that impactful. Well, I won't even say that. What I'm going to propose is the following. It would seem to me that at a very minimum, given what we're seeing, that we need, it would be appropriate for you to help us draft a very strong letter to direct, and address it as an open letter if we want to. Solicited, solicit and see if the papers will publish it, and at least be sent to the Health Board and the County Commission, and directly to each one of the business owners in Whitefish. With what our concerns are, what we would like to see, what would be appropriate from a community protection standpoint, that, I think, it's a softer way to approach it. It's probably the only effective way we have. But I, I think it'd be, it's a disservice to this community and to the city and to the businesses that are there that we don't attempt to address this and assist them in managing this, helping us manage this problem, so the businesses can stay open and the schools can stay open. It's just incredibly important that we do that, rather than do what the Commission does and stick their head in sand and decide that it's not their job, but it's in fact their job. And the county attorney, in my view, what he is doing is malfeasance. Refusing to do his job is wrong. So that's what I would propose, if the council would like to go forward on that basis, certainly support that, help me, whatever I can. But that's kind of where I think this thing is going, or what I see as our opportunity. And we need to do this, and we're going to do, anything we're going to do, we need to do now, because we've got the explosion now. We have another, for lack of a better description, super-spreading event potentially coming up in a week. We just need to get this out there and see if we, see what buying we can get.
I am absolutely happy to do that, Frank, and I think, but, you know, I think it's a good, I think it's a good measure. I'm happy to draft a letter for you guys, just let me know what you want me to do.
I think that would be a good next step, Angie, if you have time. And I'll acknowledge Steve.
Thanks, John. And thanks, Frank, for your comments. Thanks, Angie, for being open and openly discussing this. I, we need to do more. I mean, we are the, we are the last line of defense in this whole thing. Us and the local school boards, we are the last line of defense in this whole thing. And the county's not going to do anything. No matter what we do, they're not, no matter what we say, no matter what letters we write, they aren't going to do anything. We've had 20, 20 or 21 kids in our schools test positive within the last eight days. We need to have an emergency meeting, in my opinion, and we need to draft an ordinance that is similar to what they've done in Yellowstone County and what they've done across in other places that are hotspots in Montana. Shut the bars at 10 at the latest, require restaurants to go back to 25% capacity. It's the only way we're going to get this under control. And I don't know how we enforce it. I honestly don't. We, we have, we, I don't know what we do. But we pull, we suspend business licenses until they come into compliance with whatever resolution we end up passing. That's my opinion. We're the last line of defense. Everybody else has passed the buck to us. It's time for us to do something. We are the leaders of our community, and it's time for us to say, hey, this is what we're going to do. The School Board in Whitefish said, hey, we're not going to allow our school to be open. We're going to send, we're going to put all our kids in remote learning for a week because we had eight positive tests at the middle school. The high school has made, was supposed to go back to full instruction in the middle of October, and they didn't. And they are on hybrid for the foreseeable future, and that is the safest place kids can go, is to school, because everyone is wearing a mask, there is cleaning done in between periods. We're not getting any of that from the restaurants, from the local businesses or anything. It's time for action, and it has unfortunately fallen to us, and we should do something. And it should be in place until we define some metric that makes sense for us to reopen. We can either do that, or we can cross our fingers and hope like the rest of this county has done, like Kalispel has done, like Kalispel School Board has done. We can, I mean, those are the choices we have to make right now. So that's my opinion. I think we need an emergency meeting. We need to have an emergency ordinance drafted that goes back to whatever that Level 1, Level, whatever the lowest level of...
Phase 1.
Of our, of the, oh, phase, yeah, the phases, whatever that lowest phase is of the COVID response. I, I just don't, it's up to us. It really is. Are we going to lead, or are we just going to follow the non-believers in the county? That's the question.
Could I be recognized, John?
Yes, Rebecca.
Okay. So I, as a counselor, have the right to, to make an actionable item if two other counselors were in agreement. And so Frank and Steve both agreed to put this on the agenda, but I would like to move it forward to an emergency meeting as well, because I actually agree with Steve. I think, I think we're in an emergency unlike when we first started out. When we first started, when we went into Phase 1, we did not have the numbers that we do now. And we didn't have the risks to our citizens with Halloween coming, and immediately afterwards, Thanksgiving coming, and immediately afterwards, Christmas coming, with people coming from all over the country to travel here, but also leave here and maybe take the virus elsewhere. And so I think our citizens' health, they have a constitutional right to a clean and healthful environment. And so we have to do something. If it supersedes what other people are willing to do at this time, it's, to me, the most appropriate thing that we can do. And I, I agree with Steve that we need to go backwards, and we need to be really clear about what we expect people in Whitefish to act like. So I think we need to go back to enacting our own mask ordinance. I would be fine going to a 25% capacity and closing bars and restaurants early. A lot of states are closing them at 8 p.m. And we, unfortunately, it's right before the election, and so there's a lot of schism and disinformation. But I do believe it's a threat of permanent health problems and possibly death for some of our citizens if we don't act quickly. So I'd like to make a, a motion to have an emergency ordinance, I mean, an emergency meeting as soon as we can to develop a plan of action to get through the next four months. That's all I have for now.
I'll take your suggestion as an actual motion, Rebecca, which would be to schedule a special meeting. But I do believe we need to give our city attorney and our city manager and those involved with our crisis communications adequate time to draft and develop legislative options and other options that are available for a charter city of our size with self-governing powers. And I think that's going to take a bit of research and perhaps coordination with Helena to pull it together. So while I'm in favor of a special meeting, I think at a minimum, we need to give our city attorney several days to, to help pull the information together that we can then consider as a council. With that said, I would, in a second, to Rebecca's motion to call a special meeting with the caveats I just laid out on the table.
I'll second it.
That was seconded by Counselor Quinell. Is there further discussion? And Angie, would you like to add anything to this conversation before we take a roll call?
Sure, I would, actually. A, I think, you know, we need to, 48 hours is generally how much notice we give. Given in light of the importance of this to Whitefish, I would suggest you guys give it maybe a week. If you want to do five days, that's fine. I can pull it together. I do need direction with respect to what restrictions you would like in place. Understand that there's alternatives, but I think Dana and I both need some input as to what restrictions you guys would like in place and to present you with a couple of alternatives. But again, given the importance of this, I would suggest scheduling at least five days.
I would go further to say, to Angie's point, that we need to be a week out. It would be scheduled for next Monday with all due respect to the council. And I'd also like to clarify that Rebecca, you indicated 25% capacity in other businesses that I've spoke to about this issue in terms of occupancy and what it's going to take to keep these businesses solvent and alive through this pandemic so that they're still in business and their doors are open for business. Once we get through this, 25% is not going to cut it. And I think we need to be somewhat congruent with the Governor's directive when we went into Phase 1, which was 50% capacity, not 25. I think 25, 25 is an absolute deal-breaker, and I think we need to, again, be consistent with, you know, former directives that we received from the Governor. And I'll leave it with that for discussion or comments from the council.
It's fine, John.
Further comments from the council on Rebecca's motion, which was again seconded by Counselor Quinell? And I would add that it would be scheduled for a week from today, which would be the 26th of October.
John, I've just got a couple of things I want to throw out here as we go forward with this. I think similarly to what we did when we ended up having to go through the brain damage, I'll call it, of, in fact, enacting a mask ordinance before the Governor came out with it, I think we sent a very clear message to our businesses and to, to the public as a general proposition, what our expectations are and what we hope to see. And I would, I would hope that if we're going to... I would, I would hope that if we're going to go this route, or at least begin to investigate what ordinance is, if any, we might want, uh, uh, have in place, that we still provide a, uh, very public letter. Um, as I suggested earlier, and that we try to get that out and published, um, early this week as we can and to the Bo- Health Board and to the Commission. Um, so that we are, at least we're giving people a signal of what our concerns are, what our expectations are, uh, what we think it's gonna take to fix this, or at least put it back on the rails. Um, it, I think it gives people an opportunity to, um, say, I got you, I hear you, I can do this. A kind of an approach to life. And I think that would be, um, again, in the spirit of we're all in this together. Um, I think that that would be something we ought to do in any case. And I agree that, uh, just from a timing perspective and in terms of what we're concerned about, a meeting on the twenty-sixth would be more than enough time for us to enact whatever emergency ordinance, if we felt it was appropriate at the time, um, and have it in place, uh, well before the, uh, um, the Halloween holiday or any of the holidays that are coming up this, uh, this early winter. So that's just my thoughts.
Thanks Frank. Any other comments from the council before I take a roll call?
What are we at right now for restaurants? Is it seventy-five percent capacity?
Yeah, if I could just make a quick comment, John, um. I, I read the articles about that recent Health Board meeting and I, I found it frankly infuriating. And I, I, I have a hard time understanding why the problem is getting as bad as it is and yet we sit around and debate the politics of it rather than how to solve the problem. And I think that in my mind, i- i- it's hard for us. You know, that board has a lot more, uh, experienced folks in it. It's got a lot of folks who deal with these issues, that medical professionals, et cetera, that are sitting there saying, we need to do something and nothing's, you know, happening. And so, um, I would echo Frank's comments. I think that any um, public pressure that we can apply for them to do something, I think would be a good thing to do. And I would ask that they would step up and quite honestly do their job. And I, I think that that's so far has just not happened, at least what, based on what I read from the previous meeting. So I'm also curious when their next meeting is because, um, you know, I think that, you know, the right, the best place for this to be addressed is this, is with the Health Board. Now, with all that said, you know, I, I certainly don't wanna sit around and watch this, this virus spread around our town unchecked because nobody's willing to do anything all the way down the line from federal government to state to county. You know, at some point, I do think we need to look at something. But the problem is, I, I feel somewhat uninformed about it in the sense that, you know, we don't have the benefit of information about where is it coming from? Is it coming from bars and restaurants? Is it coming from the schools? Is it coming from visitors or is it coming from locals? Um, and so, you know, I think a- as far as I am concerned, I would appreciate um, as much education as can be provided about, uh, what other areas of the state are doing. Um, if there's any relevant information about where the virus is coming from, um, that can help to and what, uh, what control measures are actually effective and which ones aren't. I know that's a tall order and I know that, you know, we're not a health board. So, uh, I, it's the problem with us legislating it. But, um, you know, I, I would just reiterate, I, I think if, if, if we can apply any public pressure for them to do the, this as they're supposed to do, I would very much like to do that. Um, if we're just gonna sit around and do nothing and, you know, my wife's been out of work for two weeks because, you know, our daycare got shut down. It's ridiculous. And so if, if we can't, if nobody else is willing to do anything all the way up the line, then yeah, I think we should talk about it. Um, and I'd like to be as informed as I can. Thank you.
Well, well put. Further comments from the council? I know Ryan had a question and I'll, I'll direct this back to Angie under the current, uh, directive. Angie, are bars and restaurants held at seventy-five percent capacity?
I believe it's at seventy-five percent right now, John. So, and just that, that I would just, you know, if I'm gonna draft an ordinance, I would just like a little bit more information. Um, I hear you guys saying fifty percent capacity. Are we going back to mask ordinance? Um, are we talking about closing hours? I just need a little bit more direction from you guys to be able to address what your needs are.
If I could, if I could make some comments, I have some ideas about what we need to be doing. Um, I, I think one thing we can do is look at what the Yellowstone County Health Board passed last week. Um, they have an amended health order um, that they, that they passed. We can look at that. There's also a website that I will, I'll send you Angie that has GIS data, um, about the different indicators that we are, that the county is tracking in terms of calls placed to the nurse line. The capacity to conduct, conduct contact monitoring, the number, number of new cases per monitor per day. Um, the healthcare system capacity. I've talked to several nurses, uh, two of whom work in the COVID ICU unit. They are past capacity and they're, and they're, um, so those are some metrics we need to look at. And when, when those things come down, then we can say it's safe to reopen. Uh, I also think we need to look at short-term rentals. Does it still make sense to be allowing all these people from out of state to come into our county? Uh, to into our town. I was, last Thursday, I was at the Whitefish Trail. There were three cars from Montana and five from out of state at Lion, at Lion Mountain Trailhead. These are the things we need to be looking at. And I think if you're looking for direction, we need to, I, I, I'm glad to work with you. I'm happy to work with you, but we need to pick some metrics that we look at to say, hey, when these things come down for a matter of time, a week, two weeks sustained below a certain level, then we can open back up. But the problem is that we keep doing these, this cycle of two weeks and it just, it doesn't work. So, um, we need to be looking at some real data and there is real data out there and we need to have access to it. Um, and we need to, and then it can be based on a time scale, past two weeks past that. But those are the things I think we need to be looking at. Um, but I think in terms of what we, what our restrictions are, we can look at other communities in Montana like Yellowstone County because they didn't, they didn't pass the buck on to their towns. They actually took action.
Sure, Steve, and I'd appreciate you sharing that with me. I mean, and i- it's not that I'm not on board for doing it. I just would like council direction of what I'm supposed to be doing. So, I mean, I, I would happy to be work with you on this ordinance. I just, I just want council direction on what restrictions do we want and you know, I know the why. I just need them to know the what.
And from, from my perspective, Angie, it's what the council's conveying here tonight is concern regarding large gatherings and to Ben's point, determining whether or not, and the nexus for the infections spiking are indeed coming from our bars and restaurants. I know that's a monumental task and you're never gonna answer that given the information that we have available to us. But I know under the governor's phase one directive, when it did address restaurant, bar, breweries and distilleries, all the patrons must be out of the bars under phase one again. Um, both restaurants, bars and casinos by eleven-thirty and breweries must follow uh, current state laws on closing time and that capacity must be limited to fifty percent of normal operating capacity. Um, to allow for adequate group spacing and social distancing. So I would, I would suggest that as a starting point for any recommendation I made forward to the council and and, and trying to be as congruent as we can with state policy and state policies. Um, acknowledging that there may be directives coming down from the Helena, down from Helena, um, for phase one restrictions.
Perfect. Nope, that gives me a starting point. Thank you. That's what I needed. Appreciate it.
John, if I could just add something, please?
Of course.
Okay, um, you know, one of the things I talked to Carrie about was, you know, if there was a potential closure, you know, what would the duration be? And she said that they would look at four weeks for COVID because it's double the incubation period for any pandemic. Um, they wanna see declining numbers. One of the challenges we're gonna have is we don't have Whitefish numbers. And so you're gonna be trying to steer the entire county's numbers down with just Whitefish closures, which that's fine. But I just wanna know that there's, that, that is a challenging um, number, I guess. If we could maybe tie it to school numbers, like Whitefish schools are going, you know, better than not. Uh, I think you might be able to have a little closer nexus there. But again, I think, you know, all the indicators. And I, I do wish that I had the meeting with the North Valley Hospital and the school today instead of tomorrow night because I think I could, could have provided some more information, I'm sure. Um, but I think we just have to figure out how we're gonna use the county-wide metrics for Whitefish, um, for that purpose. Um, again, like I said, bars and restaurants are a spot, but when we look at stage one, um, phase one, there was a higher regulations on some other things like salons and, and small gyms. So gyms were impacted. So are we gonna start impacting gyms? I don't, I don't really know. Um, they say, you know, anything where there's gathering indoors now. And so, um, I'm not quite sure how that's gonna impact us. But I mean, I think we have enough, uh, Angie, I think we can at least work through it. And I think, um, I could talk to Carrie some more about it. Um, she'll at least give us some insight into it. Um, my, my biggest concern is staffing and being able to enforce it, as you know. Um, just so, so you know, um, I'm gonna be working with Ben on payroll this week because we, we don't have a payroll clerk here. So we're, we're struggling with staffing right now, um, from, from being able to enforce it. And I can tell you that come Halloween, if they're closed down, I am not gonna be going door to door at ten PM making sure they're closed. And I don't think our police officers will either because they're gonna be checking DUIs and other calls. So just know that it's gonna be hard to enforce. We'll, we'll receive a lot of complaints. Um, and I don't know if you wanna take the approach of us sending a letter to businesses this week saying, here's what's gonna happen if you don't voluntarily comply. We did that last time. Do we wanna take the same approach this time?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we tell them, this is what's gonna happen if you don't voluntarily reply. I think the added, the letter I'm proposing or the direction I'm proposing is that the letter should say, this is the problem. This is what we think is gonna fix it. We want you to take action to help this community. Please do it and let us know what your plan is. I think, and if we get, nobody responding, we get nobody responding. Um, but I think that if they, it, it leaves it in their hands to make a commitment one way or the other. And then we'll know, um, whether we're gonna get any community buy-in for this or not. And I think we'll, and whether or not as a result, we might have to take this, what I'll call draconian action, um, to get people to do what they know they should be doing in the first place. And that's, I, I, I don't think you'll use, use it as a threat. I think we just use this letter of as a, as a way to communicate with them. This is our concern. This is the community's concern. These are the things that we know or believe will have an effect on it and an impact on it. Please let us know what your plan is.
Now, are, are we sending that to all bars and restaurants? So, you know, are they gonna be contacting the council with their public comment on that? Or I, I guess, I just need clarification. Like I, I thought we were sending a letter to the, the Board of Health and, and I understand that open public letter. But do we want to inform them that you're considering a, an ordinance come Monday? I mean, I think we need to tell them if you are.
Uh, yes, absolutely. We do. Um, and Frank is right. We, we don't, we don't threatening. We wanna say, hey, you guys know this is a problem in our community. We need to, we need to be the adults in the room and we need your help to take care of this. And this is what we would like to see you guys do because these are the things that we know help prevent the spread of this disease. And that's what we're trying to do because we don't wanna overwhelm the hospitals. We don't wanna, we don't want any more kids to get sick in our schools. And we, we've gotta tamp this thing down. We gotta flatten this curve and, and these are the things that we know work.
That's, I.
Doing that. So that's what I say. And in terms of the county data, that's all we have to go on. And when the county data comes down, then yeah, Whitefish will, will, we can, we can release, we can ease these restrictions. I don't think we need to try to find the city data because it's obviously forthcoming from the county. So we rely on the county data and that's well published.
Let me, let me speak real quickly, Rebecca.
I mean.
Rebecca, I'm gonna take the floor here for a second.
Okay, go ahead.
What I'm not comfortable with, counsel, is messaging to our business community that we're considering an ordinance or a series of ordinances on Mon- next Monday on the twenty-sixth, at the same breath, asking them to voluntarily comply and essentially giving them a two to three day window to demonstrate compliance. We went through this with lodging, you know, back in March and April when we instituted the temporary restriction on long-term lodging reservations. And I, I felt that while we had to act, we acted a bit prematurely before we actually could have voluntary compliance demonstrated for our businesses. And I believe that in the spirit of Whitefish, we're gonna get compliance if we sincerely reach out to our businesses and ask them to adhere to these recommendations. So thinking through the comments that have been shared tonight by the council, my recommendation is that we give staff and ourselves a minimum time period to at least make contact with our businesses, do the necessary outreach to encourage voluntary compliance rather than send the message that please voluntary comply. Oh, you had three days, you didn't do it. We're putting an ordinance in place next Monday. I don't think that's very fair. And I would, in hindsight now, recommend that this issue not be brought up in a special meeting, but at our next regularly scheduled meeting in order to provide adequate time for public education, outreach, coordination with our school district, and then consideration of an ordinance, um, at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
John, I, I, I could live with that problem. I just, the only issue that I'm seeing is that in large measure, the next super-spreader event is before our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Um, and now and then, we're not beginning to see some inklings that folks are willing to comply. And maybe we, maybe we rightly should count on, um, the the goodwill of our businesses because they've demonstrated in the past, in the past, to do that. But the only problem waiting until after, until our next council meeting is that it will be after Halloween. And we are, and the, the other thing that, and maybe it would change, John, and we already know we're already be, there are being published activities at some of our in-town facilities um, that are in direct violation of the current governor's order and are set up to be exactly what they will be, super-spreading events. Um, and so I, that's my only hesitation with taking that approach. And I, and I, I think you're right. I think it, three days is too short a time. Um, and it's just kind of the risk we're willing to take, um, because that's what it boils down to. Will they, will they comply? Will they agree to the community values, I'll call it? Um, I just, I don't know.
Could I, could I say something now, John? Um, is it okay to talk? Yeah. Okay, um, so I think, um, we did impose a lot initially on the lodging and particularly, um, when we didn't really have many cases at that time. Um, and then also the restaurants and the shops, you know, did an amazing job of changing their, um, ways of operating really very quickly to, to, um, accommodate our masking ordinance. Um, I think it's different now. I think, uh, at that point, we didn't really have much COVID in the valley. We just knew it was coming. We only had two or three deaths, I think, at that point. And our hospital capacity was not maxed out. Um, since that time, we're, we are actually in a pandemic of, that is a crisis. And so And so I, even though nobody wants their business to close. Us not coming up with other suggestions for the downtown area in particular. Maybe they could do private parties after 8:00 PM, you know, limit the number of people that come in, make them get a ticket ahead of time. Shut the door at that point and then people can party on from that point on. But it's not going to be the same as a normal Halloween where people go from bar to bar to bar. They're packed absolutely like sardines and it's really fun. But this year, if we do that, we could actually make people really sick. And they take it home to their family members who then they have Thanksgiving with, who then get those people sick. And so it's just a different time right now. And I, I think if we worked out some novel ideas for how people could still. Keep their businesses open but not put themselves, their staff or community at risk. We should be doing it this week, not waiting a week. And so um, I don't know. I mean, I've worked in healthcare for three decades and more. And so. When, when you're in an emergency in healthcare, it's, it's dire, you know, you actually do things. And so I might have this perspective more than you guys because you don't want bad stuff to happen to people, you know. So, so I, I would prefer if we had a meeting before Monday to iron out the details. And then Monday, come up with the actual plan of what we think we could implement. And one other thing I'd like to ask is I found a model where it was in, in Indiana. And uh, they have a, a way of releasing data through a privacy agreement amongst many different. Entities so that they have real-time data to work with. And we don't have that, you know, and Dana's been asking for it for a long time and she's never gotten it for our city. So we really don't know the severity that we're dealing with because we don't have realistic data to work with. So I think either Freedom of Information Act request at least. And then also maybe some kind of a working agreement with the county and the state. So we actually have data that we can actually work with for the long term. Because this isn't going away. It's going to be with us for months now because we didn't tap it down when we could have. So that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Let me, thanks Rebecca. Let me try to distill down everyone's thoughts tonight. I think to your point about. Going down the route of a Freedom of Information Act request, Rebecca, with all due respect, it's going to tie us up in court for months. It's not going to be something that's going to be effective in the short term. It seems to me that in the short term, the bigger concern of this council is. Regulating restricting super spreader events in particular Halloween. So. In an effort to compromise amongst all of you and the concerns we've heard from staff. About this heavy lift would be that on Monday, if we do meet for a special meeting, if that does get the vote of the council, that we. Uh, limit that discussion to an ordinance that perhaps just addresses closures and occupancy for Halloween night. Not in perpetuity or not in perpetuity, but not for a longer duration, just to address our, our concerns for Halloween. When I talk with businesses in the downtown, both this bar and restaurant owners, their opinion, and they're the ones on the front lines. Is that this virus, and it's, it's obviously coming from out-of-state tourists and people that are patronizing our businesses. But from their perspective, it's actually coming from within. It's coming from their younger employers or employees that aren't taking this. Seriously and are continuing to go to social gatherings and parties. And then they're bringing the virus to the workplace. They're being, they're getting sick. And then the employers are faced with mandatory contact tracing from the county health department and forced to shut down. And you can look at 10 or 12 businesses in our downtown that have faced that. And so it, it's more coming from within is what I'm hearing from our downtown businesses. And I strongly feel that if we can give our businesses the time through goodwill. To act voluntarily for a minimum of two weeks. And see what type of response we receive from our businesses. I think that's a much better. Move than implementing something on Monday night that will be, you know, citywide and in effect for up to 90 days. Which is what an emergency ordinance can provide. So my recommendation to this council, if it's okay with the first and the second. I believe Steve, Steve made the motion was to. Direct staff to come up with some language in an ordinance that specifically addresses Halloween evening. Periods of operation, occupancy, and then provide them the time they need, given their current workload to bring something back. Uh, to the council at what would be the November 2nd meeting to address this issue on a broader scale for consideration. And of course, we would encourage a robust public uh, process when we consider any potential future ordinances. So that, that is my recommendation. And Steve, I'm just going to direct this right back to you. Would that be? Okay with you in terms of your original motion?
I think it was Rebecca's motion originally. That's okay.
Who was the first on the motion, Michelle?
That was the, that was Rebecca.
That was my motion, John. Would you, would it be okay if we did Friday night too? So it'd be the weekend, Friday and Saturday night?
That, that's completely your discretion. If you're more comfortable with that, I would be certainly open to that.
Uh, I think that would be protective and I, I think it, I think what you're saying is a really good idea. Isolates out when we're at the highest risk, gives people some options to um, protect their staff and themselves and the patrons. But isn't too far reaching for too long. So yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, Steve, is that okay with you being the second to the motion?
That's fine with me. I, I would like to ask one additional question of staff. Is there anyone that, that is working with the schools COVID-19 response team? Is there anybody that's on that team? Because it seems like maybe we should have somebody on that team.
Steve, I'm going to be attending uh, what is going to be a whitefish schools uh, COVID response. I don't know from the school districts in the valley if, we don't have representation for all the school districts in the valley. But we are doing more of a local whitefish directed task force. Uh, we're just starting that. It's going to be our first meeting tomorrow.
No, that was my, that was my question. There is, there has been a COVID-19 response team in the school, in Whitefish School District since. BA or something like that. Um, so hopefully we can, they've been, I know that they've been working with like what metrics are important to be looking at in the longer term. Uh, but to answer your question, John, thank you. Yes, I'm, I'm okay with looking at something for next Fri- for Friday and Saturday of Halloween.
Great. Thank you, Steve, and for all the counselors' comments. Before we ask Michelle for their feature, or their additional comments from the council.
Just a real quick, John, I'm so sorry, just a real quick her, like. If we're going to do it for Halloween, we need to do it. Probably this week. I lost track of time, but I don't think that we can do it in two weeks. So if we're going to look at an ordinance restricting it on Halloween, we probably do need to call a special meeting. So just.
That was my suggestion was that we actually adjust that on October 26th.
Perfect. Okay, thanks. Just wanted to be clear.
Further comments from the council on any COVID-related issues or the direction and motion that's on the table? Not seeing any. Michelle, roll call please.
Counselor Fury.
Was that me?
Yeah.
Sorry, I have a really terrible connection and I didn't get a lot of it. I'm going to make a comment before I vote because I'm going to vote against the motion. I just, I'm, I'm voting opposed. I would like to be able to actually tell people why that is the case. But as I look at that screen, I can tell you I'm the only person in the food and beverage business here who's had to go through a business closure. This is not the right approach. I vote opposed.
Counselor Davis.
I would have really liked to hear that commentary. I will vote in favor.
Counselor Sweeney.
I will vote in favor of having the meeting on Monday. I won't, I'm not sure I'm in favor of an ordinance.
Counselor Norton.
In favor.
Counselor Hannon.
Opposed.
Counselor Quinnell.
In favor.
Thanks, Michelle. The motion does carry on a four to two vote with counselors Fury and Henan voting in opposition. And just for the record, Andy, I know you were having difficulty listening. You probably still are now. How the motion was read is next Monday night, simply holding. Public hearing to address next Friday and Saturday night, so October 31st and I believe November 1st being the Halloween holiday. And then consideration of potential actions the council may take at a future meeting, which would be on November 2nd. I want to be very clear, the purpose of holding a public hearing on November 2nd will be. To allow for voluntary compliance from our business owners, to hear from our business owners. And to have a robust public process and comment period at that meeting. And we're certainly not being pre-decisional here, at least I'm not. I know this council is not thinking that we're going to automatically implement something on November 2nd. It's simply providing this council the opportunity to understand better what the options are at a local level. Given the fact that we're not seeing much action from the county or state for that matter. Uh, with that said, um, I'm going to go ahead and. Close this session. Are there any further comments in general in the council this evening?
The issue has come up before regarding having someone from Whitefish on the county health board. And it's been clear again last week that um, having someone from our city on the health board. I don't know where we are with that, getting that process going and having a member from city council being part of that health board.
Thanks, Steve. Um, we are still negotiating with the commissioners. Uh, we tried to Columbia Falls Council. And I tried to get a MOU through them that would provide additional seats for the cities. They're not having it. Um, I fear that by adding only us, uh, we're not going to sway a vote by any means. Population wise, there's 50% of people in our county that live in a city, um, incorporated city and 50% do live in the county. But um, we are working on it. We're supposed to meet on Thursday to talk about the commissioners' rejection of our offer. They want to keep it status quo. They have offered us a seat on the board. But uh, for both us and Columbia Falls. Uh, but we were really hoping that there would be a, a little bit different changes. Because as it's set up, um, the commissioners have a full control of that board, um, no doubt. They appoint all the other positions other than three, uh, and it's a nine-member board. So um, we are in the process of moving forward with that. And as soon as I get um, kind of more on board, what, what I guess I should get from the council is. You know, are you okay with just having one seat? Do you want us to continue to try to think of alternatives to have additional appointees by cities? Or is one seat good enough? I know Calispel hasn't been happy with just having one seat, but I mean, one seat's better than none, in my opinion. And I think we'll go with that no matter what. But um. You know, is there interest to try to push forward? I think we're going to be pretty much stuck in a hard place with the commissioners at this point. Uh, the only thing I thought of was maybe there could be three city positions and then one that's appointed by the three cities. Together, um, so that there was at least four of the nine. That still gives commissioners uh, five of the nine. But um, at least gives one more to the municipalities because unfortunately, cities deal with different issues than um, the other, you know, the, the county. And it's not just about pandemics. It's about septic permits. Um, you name it. It's about, you know, restaurants and bars and. Managing those health code issues. And so cities do have a different demand than, than the, the county. And so trying to get us to a little bit more of an even playing field uh, was our intention. But if that's not the council's desire, we can definitely probably move forward with just amendment to include us as a seat on board. Any input?
Well, one is better than none, um, but push as hard as we can to make the change. So that it's half and half city membership versus county membership. If that's, if that's what we can get, I mean, if that's what we're pushing for.
I concur.
John, you're muted.
Further council comments tonight?
I have a few um, small things, John, that I wanted to bring up.
Go ahead.
Is that okay? Okay. I really, there's no uh, illuminated crossing at Kitty Park in Baker. So that's really a great hallelujah. Thank you, Craig, for making that happen in Corin. Much safer since we had a child get hit there. I think our Bulldog Boys won the state golf championship, which is wonderful. The public hearing for the Lost Coon Lake being changed to Lost Loon Lake is Tuesday. October 27th at 3:30 PM. And that was in the paper as well. So. Thank you, Angie and Frank in particular and Richard for spurring that on. And then also I just wanted to call out the Whitefish Pilot won first place for investigative reporting. For its in-depth coverage of our community and the pilot staff won 10 awards combined. So good job, Heidi. And uh, other than that, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Rebecca. Great updates. Appreciate it. Further comments from the council? Dana, anything further from you or staff?
Um, I'll just give you an update on city hall. We are going to reopen on Thursday. With the health department's recent recommendation to limit your exposure. Now, they came out with a PSA today, if you haven't read it or a press release. It says to limit your exposure to less than 15 minutes um, for uh, non-household close contacts. So what we'll do is on Thursday, when we reopen to the city, uh, to the public. We will be requiring anybody who needs to be in city hall for more than 15 minutes to call ahead. Um, and trying to use our remote services um, and to really try to limit the time people are in city hall. Uh, for both staff and for the public. Uh, but we are going to reopen. Fingers crossed we can stay open, but um, if we have another situation that requires additional quarantine from positive cases. I'm not afraid to close city hall down. So it could occur again. But um, as of right now, we've gone the four weeks. For the period of uh, of closure, which um, has made it so that we have no confirmed transmission in city hall. Uh, but we will, again, like every open Thursday with some limited services. That's it.
Thanks, Dana. I'll just, I'll just close with on a positive note. It's been awesome. Uh, and I'll give this shout out to Craig and Maria. And I know Carla worked hard on grant writing for the Baker Avenue Underpass project. But it's awesome to see that project coming to fruition after, you know, being envisioned, boy, eight, 10 years ago. When we adopted our downtown master plan. And I think it's going to bode very well, not only for pedestrian safety. But really uh, linking our downtown with the north neighborhoods, you know, the Wisconsin Avenue Commercial District. And the recent residential developments, high-density residential developments that we're seeing spur up in those areas. So I think it's going to be a critical link to our town. And I just think it's, it's great to see that project getting done this year. So kudos to staff and the committee for their work in pushing this project forward. I think it's just going to be a wonderful addition to our town. I think it's just going to be a wonderful addition to our town. And I'm, I'm super excited to see it come to a, a rap this fall. So thanks to everyone. And I hope everyone stays safe. Thanks for the great conversation tonight. And I want everyone to know that everyone's doing their best in these times, doing the best thing for our community. We might not always agree, but I think at the end of the day, we all have the community's best interest in mind. And that's the most important thing. So I thank everyone for that. And on that note, we are adjourned. Be safe.